For September 12th, 2016 to order. As required by open meeting law, we are informing you that we will be video and audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. If anyone in the audience is going to video or audio tape, you must notify the chairman now. Hearing no one, will you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up is weekly briefing. Anyone for weekly briefing? Jeanne, if this is about the power outage, I'm going to take this up onto the town administrator's room.
Yep, should I just announce about our change in hours?
Why don't we take it up? We'll do it all at that time.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else for weekly briefing? Public comment announcements. Chief, do you want to announce the...
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to bring up two of our most recent candidates for the position of emergency telecommunications dispatchers. This is Gabriella Parker here on my left and Lathan Doig on my right. And as a result of the openings, we had two openings, if you're not aware. We had two openings in the dispatch center as a result of Kate Varley coming upstairs as my executive assistant and our other dispatcher, Amy Brulock, going, moving on to Centerville, Austerville, Mossens Mills Fire Dispatch. So, we've had those openings since July and been in the process of filling those positions. And these two candidates rose to the top. They're both Cape kids, if you will. Lathan is, grew up in Dennis, went to D.Y. And Gabby grew up right here in the town of Howard. So, we're very happy to have a couple individuals who know the Cape. And they both come to us with experience. Gabby has been working at the 911 Center and the Barnstable County Sheriff's Office over there for almost two years. All right, Gabby and Lathan comes to us from, with experience in dispatch from Falmouth P.D. So, we're very happy to have them. They're the top two candidates. It was quite a process, you know, initial interviews and then subsequent finalist interviews, and they did extremely well. So, I'm recommending them for appointment to take effect immediately. And hopefully, they're going to start tomorrow.
Great, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, Chief, if you don't mind standing. Ally, do you want to come up and take a picture? And any other family member that wants to take a picture of them being announced?
Oh, boy.
Sorry, anxious with their camera. I'm sorry.
Just step right out there. Got it? All right.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Moving on, any other public comment or announcement? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda. And A, approve the minutes from August 22nd, 2016. B, confirm the appointment of Lathan Doig and Gabriella Parker as full-time emergency telecommunications dispatchers with the Howard Police Department, effective September 13th, 2016. C, confirm approval of the New England Police Benevolent Association side letter of agreement for field training officer. D, approve coastal resiliency grant, award in the amount of $187,500 for the Sacquet Harbor project and authorize the town administrator to act as signatory.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Just a quick note on C. Last week, we had an executive session and we approved that side letter agreement. It wasn't on the regular agenda to announce, so we're announcing it tonight. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard. Next up is, under public hearings and presentations, is our annual meetings with the Architectural Advisory Committee and the Brooks Academy Museum. This is required that the, each committee and commission meets with the board every year. So, do we have anyone here from the Architectural Advisory Committee? You want to stand up to the mic?
Is this on?
Yes, it is.
I'm Barbara Jocelyn, Chairman of the Architectural Advisory Committee. For anyone who doesn't know, we meet once a month and approve commercial-only signs in buildings. We mostly signs lately, but we're getting back to buildings. So far this year, we have, our agenda, we've had 19 situations that we have approved of. And we meet, for our September meeting is tomorrow night, so we have one more on that. And so, that'll make 24 so far this year. The one that we're looking at tomorrow night is already up, I might add. Well, hopefully, we'll approve it. We have two new members coming up in the fall to be recommended by the selectmen. They have put their applications in. And I would like to retire. I've been doing it since 1988. And that's a lot of years. And I pack in a lot of years, so I'm hoping to just find someone new to take over the job as a secretary. And that's about all. I think we don't have any long-range goals. We do everything every month as it comes in. And so, we're very easy and very quick for you to interview.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for the volunteer work you do for the town of Howard.
Do you have any questions for us?
Yes, we'll get to that. The first is, this committee was appointed in October 2nd of 1984. It was voted into, from-town meeting on Article Number 11. It is an advisory committee. It was voted that we have seven members.
Yes.
So, I noticed that we have four members now.
Well, we reduced it to five.
Now, who reduced?
Legally.
Okay.
The selectmen, it was all done legally.
Okay. We haven't, we don't have that update in our packet tonight. So, that was my question, was it ever decided to reduce it to five?
It was too hard to get a quorum in the winter.
I'll have to look into it.
Okay. Okay. So, Chris is going to look into that. The other note that I had was, every time you're reappointed, you have to be re-sworn in.
Yes.
So, there's two members of your committee that haven't been re-sworn in. So, if you could just make sure that that gets done, and our liaison will tell you who they are.
All right.
Okay?
Yeah.
Janelle is your liaison, so she will be in touch.
She'll tell me.
Right.
All right.
Great. Any questions from the board for them? No? And you have cooperation from upstairs? You get everything in a packet and they listen to what your advice is?
Well, I guess so.
Okay.
I hope so.
All right. Thank you very much. So, next up is the Brooks Academy Museum Commission, which was also, it was brought up in 1988.
Must have been a good year.
Yes. Jeremy, do you...
I graduated high school, thanks.
This was also a seven-member committee.
Thank you.
Yes. So, Jeremy, like the last, this was also a seven-member committee. Been changed?
Yes. It was voted at town meeting to change it to a five. And I have it in the records, what year it was. But I do have the copy of the town meeting vote that authorized the change to five.
If you could send that, that'd be great, and I'll share it with the board.
Jerry Loftus was our previous connoisseur of information. So, I have a...
And you...
Box. That it's in.
And you are all sworn in, and you all have taken the state ethics. Thank you.
I have no doubts about that. Committee attendance, you know, there's four of us on a five-member committee right now. We have one open position. I believe it was vacated beginning of last year by Patty Smith. It may have been a year before, but the years blend together. Since then, we've had, so for a little over a year and a half now, we've had one vacancy. The four of us that are on the committee, for the most part, have a good attendance record. Being that size, it's pretty easy to just make sure everybody can make a meeting and schedule accordingly. So, we try and do that as much as we can, also with the main responsibility being the upkeep of the museum. There's not so much to meet on a monthly basis, so we do tend to try to stick to at least every other month when there's action items to be done. But it's, we probably meet nine times a year. Other membership issues, the only other issue I have to report is that, for some reason, they keep voting me in as chair. Take that for what it is. But our main goal for next year, two years ago, in town meeting 2014, I believe, we had an appropriation from CPC funds to do a historic preservation study, much like the library has done, partially done, that sort of thing. We've held back on our study in order to find out as much as we can about what's already been paid for, so that we're not duplicating efforts, as the buildings have many similarities. We have about 35,000, I think, in that appropriation for it, that we're just holding on, waiting to finalize and to narrow down our scope of work to things that haven't been done. Paint, that type of thing, as far as a historic preservation. So, that's coming up in the 2016-2017 study. The other issue that we've had come up with that is when we're talking with engineering over the RFP, there's an issue over the requirements for the certifications needed and that sort of thing, as far as the overall value of what the project's going to be. So, we're keeping an eye on that, too. That's it for the museum, for the most part. We're able to keep the grounds in fairly good shape, the museum's in pretty good shape. We do all of that, I should add, on a $1,500 per year maintenance budget. So, we are doing a pretty, pretty good job, I think, using Sheriff's Department for painting and a variety of different things. The other building we have on the grounds, besides the outbuildings, is the Kroll Barn. The builder should be finishing his building projects this week. And then, all we have is the addition of the lights. And then, we should be complete by month end, once that goes.
Great. Thank you. The Kroll Barn, is that...
Yes.
Open, complete?
No. That's what I just mentioned.
Okay. The, there was a request recently, I think, for decoys. People are looking for more Kroll belongings to put in. I believe I saw an advertisement on that.
Okay.
If not, never mind. Like, somebody said they were looking for more decoys, and the question was asked to me, do they have a sprinkler system? Is it insured?
The historical society that has the Brooks Academy Museum lease, which includes the Kroll Barn, has decoys in their collection inside the museum.
Okay.
So, I would assume that that request would be for them to be inside the museum, which would include the sprinkler system, the alarm system, stuff like that. As this building is not completed yet, it doesn't have an alarm system and that type of thing yet.
Great. Any questions from anyone on the board? Anyone in the audience? Thank you.
Quickly, I should also add, the insurance of items inside are the responsibility of the historical society, not the Brooks Academy Museum permission.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Jeremy. That's yours. Your committee.
Okay. That's it for public hearing and presentations tonight. Under old business, we have confirmed community center use fees as recommended by the Facilities Committee.
Carolyn, if you don't mind, originally, I think we talked about taking this up next week when they do their report, due to some follow-up questions that were asked. Carolyn was before us last week, and she was asked a series of questions. I feel that she's answered all of the questions, or almost all of the questions that we asked her at the time. I think tonight, we'll ask the follow-up questions, if there is any. You did a great job preparing the material. The questions, let me just get to my notes. The questions, you had a Facilities Committee meeting. The liaison to the committee, Angelo, went to that meeting, and I think a series of other questions were answered. As far as the board goes, is anyone looking for any more information that we asked for last week?
Excuse me. What we asked for last week was information on the costs and the relationship of the cost to the fee level. The documents that we have in our packet do not answer that question. They answer it very well for the amount of time that was available to put them together. But remember, the community center is occupied by three groups of people, and you need to know how much one group accounts for. For example, there's one issue that there are, there are two rooms over in the Council on Aging side, on the aging, that group's side, that aren't included, that sometimes get rented, sometimes don't get rented, those kinds of things. So, if we want to keep the numbers correct, we really have to do the cost for each of the three groups. You also have issues with, and I know this sounds silly, but you have to do it, who's responsible for cost of the entrance hall, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I think it's not difficult to do, but you can't do it in seven minutes. And that's how much time she had.
So, my recollection is, we asked for who was using the rooms, cost comparisons, not actual cost of rooms, but we asked for comparisons that were other towns.
Sure.
And she put in a couple. I don't recall having the conversation that we're looking for a detailed breakdown of each of these groups and what it costs for the rooms. So, if that's a next question, I think that we can get to next question. By no means am I saying that we're going to vote on this tonight. But one question that I asked was the weight room, which the liability waiver was included in our packet.
I think also on the weight room, I think the question was, were they employees or contractors? And you could see that there was, obviously, there was contracts applicable.
Correct.
The problem, excuse me.
Angelo?
You're not, you're not hearing me. They know the total cost of electricity in that, that they use. What rooms does that cover? If you start playing with percents and you haven't worked it all through, it doesn't work. The numbers aren't correct.
So, thank you, Chris, first, for your explanation. Second, the cost breakdown for the community center was added. If we want to look at the minutia of the rooms, then we need to ask her that question. That question wasn't asked last week. We got into, we asked for what the facility costs were, which I think she provided. And that's why I said there was follow-up questions from a meeting that you went to as the liaison. That's where I think that the additional questions came from. I also have some additional questions.
Well...
Well, I want you to outline, because you're talking about it, exactly what you're looking for, and have the board approve what you're looking for.
It's really very simple. I want to know what costs apply to the rooms that they are responsible for, in either use, as offices, et cetera, et cetera. And those that they rent out, whenever they rent them out. And also, their share of the costs in general, the cost of, you know, how much of the front part of the building do they handle? What part of the kitchen should they pay for? Because there are people who use the kitchens, who rent rooms, and that's not even mentioned in there.
Okay.
And I'm just saying, it, yes, it's a little bit more detailed, but I don't want it to, seven decimal places. I think we just need to do some percentage work, that's all.
And this for, you want this for the fees for each room, for the people that are using...
I don't care about the fees for each room. I care for the fees that are, that they're, in total, that they're setting. And it's kind of like the Department of Revenue. The first words out of their mouth when they talk about setting our fees is, find out what your costs are. That's all I'm asking for. What are the costs? And if you want to read it, I have one of their documents.
Mr. Chairman, just so I can be sure I understand, so if we get a floor plan and we lay out the floor plan, if 30% of the building is related to Council on Aging and only Council on Aging and not rentable, then you want that to be taken into account as that area? And then, those rooms that are rentable, if you would, would be left as rentable area?
Sure.
And that includes, like, I'm just thinking, the kitchen and gym is going to have multi-use, so there's going to be, will be using it, and then private groups will be using it?
And the rec department will be using it?
Sure.
And by the way, our maintenance manager happened to be there, and he indicated that there are plans that will enable you to do the percentages relatively easily.
I mean, it's going to take a little bit of time, but we can certainly put that together, Mr. Chairman.
But if you don't have...
If that's something the board wants.
Well, if you don't have those totals, the answer you're coming up with is the wrong answer.
Well, we'll get the floor plan, and then we'll figure out the areas.
Yeah, but I think generally...
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, you know, first I neglected to mention, but I will mention now, that Janelle has recused herself from the, from this conversation, as she has a relative that's an employee there, correct, Janelle?
Yes, she's a subcontractor.
The information that you're looking for, Angelo, you know, I think it's important for the rest of the board to speak up on this, is, are we looking to get this detailed of information to reset the room rates, you know, or are we happy with the facility committees and the department heads' recommendation for the time being for this? And are we going to do this level of detailed report for each and every space that we rent out and each and every department this year? So, are we looking for to reset the rates that have been proposed for us, or are we just looking for backup? Because the backup I was looking for was what towns are doing what. Angelo?
I have no idea how to say anything about the fees. Are they too high or too low? I don't know. If the cost that they're dealing with is $20 and their rentals cover $18, that's fine with me. If their costs are $400,000 and the rentals cover $3, that's not fine with me. So, I don't know how to answer the question. And that's all I'm asking for. And it's not complicated, because once you do it, you have it. And you can probably use the information, update it each year, very quickly. Because I don't think it's going to change.
Julie?
So, I had some questions last week, and some of it related, and Carolyn explained that, you know, when we were looking at the for-profit groups, that that was not an easy thing for her to collect, because that changes constantly. So, I understand that. And I actually thought that, you know, looking at these numbers, I have some clarification with, there are room costs here with expenses with utilities. So, I mean, I guess, to what point do we want to know every dime for every utility? Because then, we could say, and what does it cost for insurance? And what does it cost for, you know, we can go on and on and on. But when I look at the other information from the, you know, Chatham, from Falmouth, and you clarified about Hyannis, how they're different entities set up. But, I mean, it looks to me, from, you know, reviewing that, that the numbers look on par. I mean, they actually look a little bit more expensive, slightly?
Odds are a little, well...
Well, it's hard to, yeah, they...
Again, we had this discussion. Unfortunately, the community centers are not like comparing a dump to a dump. People aren't just bringing in a bike to a bike. The Gus Canty Center is only a recreation center. We're not. We do Council on Aging. We do Veterans Affairs. We do, so there are different things inside. I certainly understand what Angelo is asking for. I'm happy to get whatever information you want. But like at Chatham, they have to do some community service hours. There are different, every community center is a little bit different to how it's set up. So, although the numbers look different, they also have to do different things also. So, it was hard to give you, we're not a bike to a bike. It's not a dump to bring you those fees. So, I apologize, but that was the best...
Yeah.
...scenarios I could give you for community centers.
Mm-hmm. I personally feel like, based on the numbers I looked at, that I felt that my questions were answered, just to be clear.
Carolyn, my questions were, it goes back to the for-profit side, and...
Sure.
It goes to the, we propose to differentiate between fitness classes, which have previously fallen under the for-profit umbrella. And you did a great job listing out who's using the community center. We seem to, as a board, have been hung up last week on for-profit. If you look at your spreadsheet, there's only three for-profits.
Right.
Looking at the revolving department affiliation, which I think would have been the other for-profits...
Correct.
Which, as explained, are services to the people in the town of Howard, which...
Yes.
...that you're offering that aren't available through town employees.
Correct. And it is set up just like the Recreation Department, although those aren't listed, but it is set up like that.
Okay. And I guess that was my question, is trying to get a little bit of a sense of these revolving department affiliations.
Sure.
Maybe just a few examples of how many people use those rooms.
Sure.
And you had mentioned once before about buying a package versus a single visit. So, one question I had was, how much do people pay? And why do we charge, if it's a service to the town of Howard, why are we charging a room rate or a rental, instead of just providing that service and then taking a percentage? Do you understand my question?
I do.
Okay.
Because I, I still need to bring in X number of money to the town. So, can I answer one at a time, if you don't mind?
Yes, please.
So, we have eight, I think, that are listed. I'm not looking at the same sheet right now. You are. Eight classes that fall under that category, four of which are in the community center sponsorship, and four under the Council on Aging. I can speak pretty authoritatively to the ones that are under the community center. Those would be Cape Sands Ballroom Dance, Exercise Class with Jill Brown, Yoga, and Mary Ann's Exercise. Of the four classes, two of the classes, Exercise Class with Jill Brown and Mary Ann's Exercise, can average one to two participants per session. I'm just going to read it, because it's going to be easier, sorry. Both charge about $8 per class. For the sake of example, let's say Ms. Brown has two participants in her weekly exercise class, which meets once per week for one hour. Over an eight-week session, charging $8 a class, Ms. Brown takes in a total of $128. The $128 less the $5 person session fee will total $118 for an eight-week class. That averages $14.75 that she makes. On the higher end, Cape Sands Ballroom averages eight to 12 participants per session. The instructor charges between $3.50 and $6.00 per class. Following the same calculation method as above, and assuming an average of 10 participants per session, over a six-week session, one-hour class, once per week, and using the highest rate of $6.00 per class, the instructor averages approximately $52.00 per hour. The yoga operates slightly differently. The instructor charges $60.00 for six classes. But they do have to be consecutive classes. Upon looking at the records for yoga, the instructor on averages receives two checks for $60.00 per individual class that she teaches. Assuming an average of one check per class, a 1.5-hour session for six classes, the instructor averages $36.00 per hour. The mathematical breakdown of class participation, cost per class, and average hourly profit for each instructor shows a wide variable of overall instructor profit. The profit ranges from $14.75 for $52.00 to $52.00. The most popular class is averaging a higher profit for that instructor. So, am I answering your question? I'm sorry.
You are, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, I did break down who's in what class and how much the instructor makes, and it's all based on how many participants they get in their class. We do the exact same thing for each instructor. We put it on our flyer, those kind of things.
Great. Thank you, Carolyn.
My pleasure.
The important piece here to me was, if you look at it as for-profits operating out of the community center without any explanation, it seems as though we're operating businesses. And for clarification, these are services for the people of the town of Howard. And for clarification, these are services for the people of the town of Harwich. You know, my questions are answered. I think, Angelo, could you ask your question in a way that we can get a consensus of the three people on the board tonight that can, and whether or not we want to wait a week to approve these rates?
It's a very simple question. What is the total cost of the building that should be charged to, charged, if you will, to your group, your, your facilities group? So what is that number? Is it a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars is one of the numbers you give? Or is it a hundred and eighty-two plus two ninety-two? Is it a hundred, ten, a hundred and eighty-two, and two ninety-two all added together? But these aren't for all the right rooms. There are additional rooms in here, so those numbers can't be correct. And the other thing is, how much do you collect in total? And you said you probably had it, so what do you collect in total on an average year?
You have that answer, Carolyn?
Sure. So... To date, the revenue taken in from room rentals is about ten, five forty-five. In comparison to FY sixteen, which was fifteen, nine, ten. So that's what, I know, Angelo, I'm just giving you what I have in front of me. I know you want more and-
Hang on one second.
Put this way, I don't, I don't need it by week, I don't need it by month. How much, it's one number. How much did you do last year? And what do you think you'll be doing this year?
And you want everything, I think, was what we discussed.
But I'll just take it from what you have here.
Passports and everything, what I bring into the general fund, including the weight room. And I just want to give you what you want, and I, it seems, I, I just want to know-
Well, the, the revenue take, you take in from the weight room is revenue that-
Okay.
That you should-
Because that wasn't what it said.
Be granted or measured as, as, as yours.
Okay. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm, I just want to make sure that we're on the, kind of the same page here. I, I think the request that's before the board this evening is, is basically a rate schedule. And in my mind, this is a, almost a capitalist exercise, where are we charging what's consistent with other towns? In, in terms of having a, providing a service to the public. And then the second component that I think I'm, that I'm hearing tonight is, okay, if we charge that, how much are we recovering, if you would, i- as part of the, the fee structure? And I think that really what the board needs to think about is, we, we have to set fees that are realistic to the marketplace. And if we're trying to recover, a full cost recovery, you know, I am concerned that the fee structure may be out of whack. And I think that, I, I think it's worthwhile exercise to, to make sure that we get that number. But I think we have to set some fees in order to see, and then as we go, we can adjust and report back. If we're recovering fifty percent of our, our direct costs, are we recovering thirty percent of our direct and indirect costs? I think that makes sense to, to answer that, and I, I understand the, the question that's being asked. But we, we need to have a, a fee structure, kind of first and foremost, and, and make a decision. And if we're going to be potentially double what another town is, then, then what is the public policy that, that's going to be a conflict? I don't know what the answer to that is, is Angelo. But the, the second part that I, I'd like to bring up is, this evening we put on there the middle school. And are we going to be doing the same exercise for the middle school? And, you know, the board said you have, you know, basically two years, Chris, to, to get people in there and, and get using that. And I just want to, maybe not necessarily for tonight's discussion, but we need to have some kind of rate structure if we're going to try to start using the, the middle school. I think the methodology of where we are, we can, we can certainly do and provide. But I think decisions need to be made in terms of what the fee structure is that we're going to be offering to, to the community and its residents.
Thank you, Chris.
Michael, no, no time that I say you need to match the fees and the costs. That's, that's the fear people have, and, and that's not the case. I ju- I just think if you are in a home, and you have a job, and you know how much you're going to collect during the year, and then you know how much you can pay in for bananas and potatoes and your rent. If you don't know how much your costs are, you run into trouble. And I think it's a very simple question. We've been doing fees for rooms for a number of years in, in the, at, at the community center. Downstairs, there's got to be a, a number that says, this is the amount of revenue we collected last year. I don't know what it is. And if we take ten thousand dollars a, a month, how mu- how much is it, ten thousand dollars? Did you say for this month, or?
No.
For how, how-
Annual.
That's right.
So if we take ten thousand dollars, we already know that we're dealing with three or four hundred thousand dollars of cost. Right? Is that your numbers that I'm reading? Is that, I didn't want to just read it correctly.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're reading.
Uh, the community center operating costs for FY seventeen.
Oh, okay, yep.
Okay. So let's say it's three or four hundred thousand dollars. So the answer is, there is a huge gap. Now, if everybody's comfortable with that huge gap, because that's coming out of taxes, that's where it's coming from. Or do you want everybody who's, who's playing pickleball to pay two dollars more instead of two dollars? That's a different decision. You can only make that decision when you have those numbers. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
And, and the numbers are huge differences.
Okay. Thank you, Angelo. I do agree with Chris, I think this is two completely different conversations. I think before us tonight, we have to approve room fees, and I, and I do believe that Carolyn has answered the questions we've asked. Chris, you started to, and I don't think I got the explanation. The employee in the weight room, can you just explain to us how that's, how that's paid? They're not an employee?
They're considered a vendor, so it's basically a contractual relationship.
Okay. As far as the, the rest of the conversation and the numbers go, I think the numbers are very important for us, just to understand the numbers of the community center. But before us tonight, with some comparisons on other towns, as recommended by Carolyn, and as recommended by the facilities committee, there's three of us here that can vote, so we have a quorum to vote. What's the pleasure of the board? I would need a motion if somebody wanted to make a motion, or we come back with it.
I want to just read it specifically, that's the-
We're being asked to approve the room, um, the, the-
I, I, Mr. Chair, I move to confirm the community center room use fees, as recommended by the facilities committee, and included in the information we have tonight.
I will second that. Any discussion on that? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Two, one. Thank you. Thank you, Carolyn.
And just, are we going to have for a separate night, or do you want, on the middle school fees? I mean, if we're going to start to try to use that building, we, we need to establish some kind of fee structure. We did model it on the fee structure that Carolyn had to charity leave.
No, no, she's in back.
I think, I think I better bring it back, because it isn't specifically listed on the-
Sure.
So I will bring that back next week, Chris, and I think that that starts to get into Angelo's concerns and-
Yeah.
And numbers that we need to have. Thank you. Next up is new business, which is amend the free cash policy. We've, we've talked about this. The board has, is going to bring up selectmen's policies to review and suggest changes on. Angelo mentioned last week the free cash policy, so I'm going to let Angelo start with this. In the packet, there was a, a free cash policy from the Board of Selectmen. Angelo?
What's in the, what's in the packet is the free cash policy that was adopted in two thousand and six, which allows certain things. And in reading it, it dawned on me that if you were to look at, and I'll hand this out, because I made, made some comments on it. The guidance that is offered by the Department of Revenue of the state on how you should handle fees, we seem to be not doing that particularly well. Because to conform to the statements on how fees are set and spent by, and, and how the money is spent, is, is, is what the DOR wants. And one of the things they do is they encourage or require, or whatever, that fees are collected and spent on what they're collected. You're paying a fee, you're not paying a tax. One of the other things that happens is, we, what we do, and Chris had mentioned this a while back, what we do with each year is we take ten or fifteen percent off the top of the fees that are collected and put it, put them aside. That's fine, I think it's, it's, it's very good. But when we put them aside, what they become is free cash. Or they get dumped in a budget someplace. Two problems. One, you can't really spend those that well on projects for, in the current year, so you have to wait. And the other thing is, you're not spending them on where they were collected, because they work in the free cash. And I think you make people very concerned with setting fees, because as Carolyn also said, you know, the money goes into the general fund. I think it's, it's time, the other thing it doesn't do is, it's a transparency problem, I think, with, with our residents. So I, I have a suggestion, and I've written, written a, a document that I can tell you right now is a very rough draft, because it includes the same percentages as included in the original document. And what that does is it, it does the following. It says we'll still take, you know, ten to fifteen percent off the top of the revenue that is, comes in from fees, and put it aside. And we are putting it aside to protect ourselves in case it doesn't get collected. But, and also, I'd put it aside in a way that if we needed it to cover an emergency, whatever that emergency was, whether it was a hurricane or whatever, that we needed, that we could pull it out and spend that year. At the end of the year, instead of putting it in free cash, I would like to put it back into the fund for each of the departments that generated the funds individually. And I, I think that what that will do will encourage a lot of people to try and, and cover, cover more. It's also, people will understand what funds are being covered, what prob- what businesses are, businesses, departments are covering their activities, and what are, what is, or what are not. It's strange when we have one or two groups that spend, that generate a lot of fees, where those fees go into the wind, or most of the time go right back to them in, in terms of free cash. It's, it's strange. I don't think free cash was ever meant to be developed the way, the way we're doing it. Obviously, there, there are ways to gen- you generate the free cash, and that's what is ever left over after you don't spend it in, in prior years, fees, a fee, and, and a tax that comes in. There's a difference between tax and free pu- and free cash. This document, which I'm going to hand out to you, please remember that the percents are not correct, because I just took them out of the old document. It needs some financial work. And I, and I think what we need to do is, is change the way we do this. Now, if, if you look up under the Department of Revenue, the setting of fees, the first thing they say is you find out what your costs you're dealing with, because they don't want you to generate, use fees to generate more money than your costs. And so it's, I don't think we need to go into it tonight, it goes on for pages. And, and it says other things about fees. People have to be willing to pay the fees. It's not a tax. Fees are legitimate when the services received for the fee are provided only to the beneficiaries of the services, rather through the general public. So I, I think this is, this is procedure for setting fees, A and F six. If you want to check it out, it goes for pages.
You distribute that to the board electronically, Angelo?
Sure. Well, I, I don't know.
If you want to give a hard copy, we'll scan it and distribute it.
There, there are more than these, though. So that's why I, I brought this up. I'm, I'm not at all sure that it's appropriate the way we have been doing it.
Okay. Thank you, Angelo. Chris?
Yeah, if I could just comment, free cash, just so everyone is kind of aware, is really just a, a term of art that's used in Massachusetts. What the policy tries to do here is a policy, as I've mentioned since I've been here, that there is a certain way to do municipal finance. Municipal finance, you, you try to predict what the numbers are going to be, basically before the fiscal year even starts. And you do that prediction really almost six months before the year starts. So the, the municipal finance encourages you to kind of estimate. And they encourage you to estimate low, so that way we don't ever get negative free cash. And, and I would just remind the board that there was negative free cash in two thousand and twelve. So the, the, the financial practice of underestimating your revenues is something that is commonly done. Actually, the state does it on, on a statewide basis, in which they have what they call a consensus revenue number, which the House, the Senate, and the Governor all get together, and they do that. That consensus number is below what the anticipated revenues are across the board. So in, in terms of the policy that, that has been in place, the, the ten to fifteen percent margin is, you know, in my mind, a, a very reasonable, a very reasonable number. And then the, the seven to eight percent of the general fund expenditures, based upon certified free cash and stabilization, I think last year may have been the first year that we actually came close to that seven to eight percent. It has not been achieved before. So I, I think having these targets, it's about building resiliency into your financial base. I, I haven't had a chance to see this, because, and, and actually, I know Angelo and I have had just some very brief conversations about this. But I guess I would like to look at it, and then I would just, too, looking at the, the board we had in the packet, the board policy, when you make a change, what the first reading means, what the second mea- reading means, and, and it has a legal significance to that. And as I understand it, you would present the revisions, that would be presented to the general public, that would be vetted. And if the board was comfortable with it and voted the first reading, then the second one is just minor tweaks and, and technical elements. And it's a second reading in which then the, the policy gets formally voted. But I, I'm a little bit concerned that what, what I am hearing a little bit is, there, there's a Emerson College case, which is how you set fees and how those fees are determined. That's one element of setting a fee. There's another, which is a fiscal policy that, that's used by AAA-rated communities, that's used by the state, that when you set those fees, because of the volatility of, of some of the fee structures, basically, we try to estimate how many people are going to use the, they use, I want to say the dump, they're going to use the dump. I mean, we can guess, but until it actually happens. And the one thing that you do not want is to make sure that we, we estimate too high, because if we estimate too high and we come in with negative free cash, that has a, a very significant ramification to the town. So I, I think the elements of this policy make sense, certainly subject to tweaking. I have, I have no problem with, with subject to tweaking. In terms of one of the comments, too, that, that has been made, and I just want to kind of publicly state this. We had, we have areas in which we, we have received more money, and the, the transfer station is one. At last year in the budget, because we received more material, we actually increased that budget by a hu- I think it was a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. So we brought in an additional, whatever it was, three or four hundred thousand, and we put that back in, because we knew we had costs related to that. So where I, where I can churn that back to try to have those, those fees that we collect match up to the expenses. The other area that I've done that in is on the, the harbors. The harbors had, where they would get additional fee revenue coming in. We've started the process of, before dredging was taken directly from the taxpayers. It was not, basically, if you would, driven by fees. So we've now put dredging in the budget. I think this past year, we did roughly fifty-fifty. So where the, where we're trying to match up the fees that we receive to the budget, we're doing that on a kind of case-by-case basis. But that policy of the, the ten to fifteen percent, it's, it's almost imperative that we keep that, because we need to have that margin error. No one, no one can predict, I wish we could predict with great certainty. I think the closest I've ever been is, is within two tenths of one percent, and that was way too close. So, you know, you want to have those margins. And, you know, they use the word free cash, I think it's such a bad, a bad word. It's really excess and deficiency. Where, I, I've seen that term of art, and I think that's a more appropriate term of art. You always want to make sure that when you set your budget, when you set your fees or your revenues, when you set your expenses- your revenues, when you set your expenses, that you're gonna have excess, and you're not gonna get into a deficiency situation. So, there, there's more to this picture than, than just necessarily one component. More than happy to look at the one component to make sure that we're, we're meeting the, the elements of it. But, you know, I wanted to point out, the state is a double-A rated entity, and we wanna be a AAA-rated entity. We're one of the few towns on Cape Cod that's a double-A entity. And by adhering to practices of other Triple As, not necessarily the state, is how we're gonna move in that direction of building sufficient reserves.
Thank you, Chris.
But...
One second. The, you know, before we go on, I think it's appropriate, first of all, my mistake for not catching the first reading. This is more of a conversation, and, and we're gonna bring these policies, and the more complicated ones, we're gonna bring back more than once. So, I'd suggest maybe Angelo and Chris meet and go over this, and, and kick around ideas and come up with more of a draft that we will bring forward.
What, what I wanted to say is, I, I know this is a complicated issue, and I know there are a lot of different versions of, of what we should do. I thought tonight was basically a request to say, should we go through all of the steps? And the draft I gave you is a draft. It is not, not something I would bring forward. But I also agree, almost totally, with what Chris said. This sets a fine, ten to fifteen percent upfront. It states that it can be used if there are certain kinds of emergencies. Maybe there are other things have to be lived, written in there. And, but when, the money goes back, it goes back to the group that's, that generated the money, if you, if you would. Since you're not supposed to raise more money than you're, than you're using, very rarely are we gonna have somebody making a profit. Chris, I think very well, put the, the dredging into the, the waterways operation, because they had the money to cover it. We can put, you know, Sacre Tucket Harbor repairs in that, and, you know, so we're not gonna be giving that money away, and by doing, using that that way, you reduce the amount of tax dollars you need for each place, so it should balance.
Great. Thank you. Chris?
Just, I, I appreciate Angelo made another point, and I agree a hundred percent. The, the other purpose of free cash is to, or excess and deficiency account, is to act as a stabilizer. In the times that I've been here, actually, every year that I've been here, we've had more snow than we've had in the budget to cover. So, a good portion of free cash each year that's been used, has been used for that emergency contingency, if you would. So, I, it, it is being used in the appropriate manner, in, in my mind, and we haven't had to go back and have significant issues with the snow, because we do factor that into the, the thought process.
Okay. Julie?
One point I just wanna make, though, and I think, I think you're right, we need to look at all of this, and I think we have to be fiscally smart. But I also think we have to be careful about when we're evaluating the different departments that are bringing in these fees, because in good years, in building years, we're gonna have tons of money coming in from fees, from building and health and, you know, the various other departments related to good times of building. However, we also have to look at, you know, your point about maybe giving those surpluses back to those departments. I mean, I think we have to look carefully at that, too, because to Carolyn's point of the fees they're charging and the service that they're providing is a very different service than what a building department is providing, or Sacre Tucket Harbor is providing. And so, I think that we have to be smart fiscally, but we also have to look at, at the budgets and the people and the clientele that we're serving. The, the, you know, in other words, if Sacre Tucket's able to bring in X amount of money, and the building departments and the health and conservation are able to bring in another X, you know, but ultimately, you know, the kids or that are using the community center, or the elderly that are using the community center that are benefiting from these programs, are still, there's still a little piece of their fees are coming off to go into the free cash fund. I don't necessarily know that they, you know, that Sacre Tucket, that the building department get all the same percentage back, because...
Get their own back.
Yeah, right. But, I mean, I guess my point is, at what point do you, this isn't a, as much as we have to be fiscally smart and run it for stability, it's also not a business. So, there's a different, we're, we're serving the taxpayers and the community, so as much as we'd like to go dollar-for-dollar, it doesn't always work out like that. So, sometimes we have, like, to Carolyn's point, we've got an elderly population, you know, benefiting from certain services. We've got young kids and, you know, not just young, but all the way through the high school, benefiting from certain services. I know myself, I've, I've had to pay for a room to have different meetings for soccer teams and such, because I am not a nonprofit entity. So, in terms of those things, I think that we're looking at things as best we can, you know, legally, 'cause I'm not a nonprofit, I don't fall into a certain category, I gotta pay the fee. Ultimately, I don't have a boat in Sacre Tucket Harbor, but I might have a kid at the community center. And if that program is generating X dollars, I don't necessarily know that every single dollar goes back to each department that's in excess. I think we have to look at it, and you can answer that better than I can, Chris, but in terms of free cash, we look to do what we need to do, snow removal and such with it. So, I think we have to look at all of those policies very closely, so that we're benefiting all the taxpayers.
Thank you, Julie. Janelle, the other?
Um, I agree with you, Julie. I, while I appreciate what Angelo's saying, the town as a whole, and, just like in a business, there are certain aspects of a business that are going to generate revenue, and certain aspects that are going to be a drain, but the business is still a whole. And so, if we think of the town as the one big business, instead of the departments as individual businesses, I just think we have to be mindful of that going forward, and take care of each other, so to speak.
It, it's really very interesting. I find it interesting. Everybody's concerned about wanting to raise, raise taxes, or raise fees to, to people. That's not what this is about at all. Most of our departments, most of the people who raise fees, take fees, do not have profits, or they don't ha, they don't have to have profits. They don't have it. So, they spend their money, let, their money would come back, and it would, if they had some additional fees, it would reduce the amount of taxes that you would, you would have to collect. It's, it, this is not a plea to have everybody cover their costs through fees. It is, that is not that at all. But that's what everybody gets nervous about. If, if indeed, the golf group at one time was bringing in several million dollars to this town, that doesn't happen anymore. They get very close to what their costs are, plus or minus a few bucks. And instead of going through this whole drill of dumping money from, that they've generated, put it into free cash, and then give it back to them to work on something, is silly, 'cause it'll go back to them either that way or in, in, in taxes. It, it, this is not a plea to raise fees.
Okay. I think we're gonna end this now. We've got, would it be, it's acceptable to the rest of the board for Angelo to sit down with Chris and, and go over this? It's a good, good policy to review. Okay, moving on. Chris, Town Administrator Report. First, the Budget Warrant Timeline.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. More, this is just more informational. I, I do wanna get to, I realize we have folks in the library, so I'd like to get to the, the library issue, so they'd be able to go home. But, on the, the Budget Warrant Timeline, staff and I work, actually Sandy does the work for me, puts together a, a listing. For folks that haven't been familiar with this, we have, she puts in the dates, she puts in the responsibility, and the far right-hand column is actually what the charter says. So, it kinda drives us. I know Angelo's been around for a while, so he's, he's more familiar with this. But she puts together these timelines, just to give people a sense. There are some timelines that the board should kinda be aware. I, I know here, there's a tentative one for September twenty-sixth, to have Montomay Regional School District meet with the Selectmen and FinCom to discuss enrollments. That was something that I think last year was added as a, as a chairman's recommendation. So, there may be some thought that you wanna put into, you know, the board wants to put in. Do you wanna have joint meetings? I, I certainly think the joint meetings were, were constructive. I think that certainly the budget sessions that were done in concert with the, with the Finance Committee, I thought that those worked out pretty well, and it was nice for the departments to come in and do their presentation in front of the two boards simultaneously, so a little bit more efficient in terms of the time, and that way, people were getting the same story all at, at the same time, too, so there wasn't different viewpoints. Not different viewpoints, but different information being presented as, as people present. So, I just wanted to at least, you know, get you guys thinking about what you wanna do, if you wanna change any dates. I think she tried to avoid school vacation weeks and things of that nature, just to, to kinda be a little bit nicer for some folks, more so for like the school committee. Obviously, they, most of them probably have kids in the system, so we try to avoid those. But I just wanted to at least point that out, and just get that discussion started in terms of if there's any changes that the board would like.
Thanks, Chris. Do you wanna bring this back next week, or do you want us to vote on this now? I think this is, it's on the...
There's some errors on the dates.
There's some errors on the dates?
Yeah, there's a typo in here.
All right, so let's look at the dates and bring it back.
Yeah, we'll bring it back for next week.
Okay.
And then, just, I was actually, probably appropriately so, I was in the dentist chair when I got the, the text about the library having, having the same issue with their inverter. And I, I did ask, I talked to, to Sean Libby on Friday to get a understanding in terms of what's happened, just so folks are aware, the, the inverter that's over at the library has, I think it malfunctioned before, this time it has not worked. So, it's, it's a more serious situation. He has, he reached out to the company, which is based in California, on Friday. He just texted me, I don't always answer my texts, but I knew one was coming, so I looked at it. He did get ahold of the technician, the whole the technician did, which I think they have a technician in this area, I can't remember exactly where. But the technician said that he was gonna coordinate with his boss tomorrow, and look at expediting the repair work, and, and see if it's warranty-related. This work was just repaired two weeks ago, three weeks ago, a month ago? So, I mean, the work is, is fairly recent. You know, obviously, I'm very, very frustrated with, you know, that we can't seem to get this, so it's, it's operational. I think the chair kind of alluded to me at the beginning, you know, of the meeting, you know, what are the next steps? And, and I think seriously, we need to think about what are the next steps. I don't always do this, but, you know, perhaps we need to have the town attorney look at the, the contract when this was originally done, you know, and, and see. I think it's so long that it's, it's probably out of warranty, but there, there should be some element of, if they do work, it, it, it should last, you know, more than thirty days. So, to, to see if there's elements on that. I have talked to Sean about, there is a item on the capital budget, it was a placeholder of about a hundred and ten thousand for FY nineteen, and I think it's gonna be a little bit more than that, which Sean had told me he got that estimate from the fire department, but the fire department needed to change a generator. The pad was already there, the wiring was al, already there, so they just literally brought in a new generator and plunked it in. If we were to have a permanent generator located at the library, it needs to be located, sited, where's it gonna be, what's the, the amount of kilowatts that it's gonna generate? So, I, I think we need to, to, well, number one, probably accelerate that on the, the capital list, to, to put that up into eighteen. And then, I, I have talked to Sean even this afternoon, and said, you know, is there anything we can do in the, in the interim? The, the problem with this is that the, a lot of the systems, the emergency system is tied in with the regular system, so once one fails, it's, it's hard to disconnect. So, I've asked him to, to see if there are any potential options. Certainly, we have a reserve fund that could be utilized. I mean, the reserve fund has its limits, so we certainly can't do a hundred and ten thousand dollars or more than that, 'cause that's basically the entire reserve fund. But I, I think that, I, I've asked him to at least look and see, is there anything we can do? So, you know, if the power goes out, I mean, the power's probably been more reliant than the backup system's been, in some ways. So, you know, having a, some kind of bypass switch, if it's all possible, needs to be explored, I think.
Is that it, Chris?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just on this topic.
May I ask you a question? Chris, the backup power that we have now doesn't totally light the, the library, does it?
Well, I, I think, and Ginny could probably help me with this, that, like, the, the lighting in the building, it basically has like two wires that go to it. One is, is the feed from the exterior, and then the second is a backup, which is batteries that are located in the library. So, it's, it's two wires that go to the same fixture. And I, I guess the problem is, is that you can't, you can't separate. In terms of, I think the batteries provide power to everything except for the elevator, if I remember that right.
No, no, actually, we, we did have that before with two, two wires, the light, light fixture, and that's what we were getting away from when we got, went to the inverter four years ago. Right now, the, the power comes in to the building, the power for the lighting goes through the emergency light inverter, and it's almost every light in the building is on, the, the power goes through there. So, when, like last October, when this first one happened last year, we didn't have lights or emergency lighting. When it failed, there was no power going through it at all. This summer, in July, when it failed, we were fortunate in that the system put itself into a bypass mode, and so it was allowing the power through it, but there was no emergency light. So, we couldn't have the public in the building, but we did have lighting. Now, we're back, it's the same situation as last October, there's no power coming through it at all, because the inverter has completely failed. You know, it's also a question of whether this is a problem with this piece of equipment, or is it power from ever-source spikes and, you know, and brownouts causing a problem with the electronics, so...
Okay, Ginny, I was...
Whether it's a re...
I'm gonna stop you right there for one second, but I'm sure there'll be more. Janelle?
I don't have anything.
Julie?
Um, so, as a total, so this inverter system's four years old, is it?
Yes.
Four years old? And is it three times it's failed now, or is it more than that? Is it four?
It, we had, we had a problem early on, our first year of inspection, when it was inspected for the annual inspection, where the person who came, subcontractor, same company technician, they said that it was in bypass mode then, and it probably had been in bypass mode for maybe six months, and we were unaware of that, that we did, we wouldn't have had emergency lights. So, so it has been, so this is the fourth time that we know of. We had two years of, of flickering dimming lights related to this, too, before it failed last October. So, it's an ongoing issue. I don't know if we can wait till next July for money from the town meeting, even with moving it up. I mean, that was our, that was our plan to submit that request, when they're due at the end of this month. But, we just don't have reliable lights and emergency lighting, so I don't foresee us being able to be open again without having to close and, and go through this again. So, I don't know what options there are to fund a repair, you know, or replacement. Before then, what kind of funds are available, or what the options are for the town, but it's really disruptive. We are, just so people, the public knows, with, with no lights and no emergency lights, we can't have the public in the building, so we've opened the library in the lobby again, where we have a small browsing collection for people to pick from, and they can pick up items that they have on hold. Every, the last two times this happened, it, it's about two weeks before it can be repaired. Partly, it's trying to schedule the technician, but a lot of that also has to do with manufacturing the parts. And whether this is the same part or not that was repaired in July, I don't know. I haven't heard from Sean that it is.
Ginny, one second.
It maybe had to, you know, for us to, oh, go ahead.
Chris, is there any, does anyone know that the giant generator in front of the Verizon Building, is that anything relevant to the power surges or the, the power problems? Why do they run on a generator?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure with that. We have a generator in this building, and...
They, they have one parked in front of their building.
I know, in front of their building. I mean, you, you know, like, the way our generator works is every, once a month, it kicks on, so if we need to have it, I, I'd imagine that they have computers, they gotta keep the computers, you know, with air, air conditioning and stuff, so they, they need to maintain that, that level. One thing I, just thinking about it, I, I think what would drive this, and, and we probably should have it drive it, that if Sean Libby comes back and says that, you know, there... have it drive it, that if Sean Libby comes back and says that, you know, that we need a hundred and fifty thousand, just to say a number, you know, we could, you know, certainly I could recommend that the board consider having a special town meeting in the fall. You know, we just put one point seven million dollars into the stabilization fund and that's what a stabilization fund is designed to do, is that if you have significant issues and you need to get it resolved, to take money out of stabilization, I believe it's a two-thirds vote, so it's something that you wouldn't want to use, you know, unless it was a true emergency. I think this, you know, being out of business and at a public, you know, a public building that people use all the time is certainly we're getting there. So, I think we should see what Sean comes back with and if he comes back with something that's, you know, I hate to say a manageable number, but if he comes back with something, you know, less than fifty thousand, then we can go to the reserve fund. If he comes back with something that says the right way to resolve it is a hundred and fifty, then that, and obviously, the board has to call for a special town meeting. But that would probably be the avenues that we could pursue, but I think we really need to get from Sean what the numbers are to get this thing fixed once and for all.
I think that we've reached a point where the current system has demonstrated that it's not a great system for us, for whatever reason. So, my request would be, we take a look at various ways of fixing it. Obviously, we have to do something temporarily, but at the same time, whether it's fifty thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand, that's only just different source of funds, but I think it's got to be done. The library's so important to this town. It's more than books, certainly, it's the kids going back and everything else after school, so I think we need to, now's the time. Perhaps we should have done it, you know, two months ago, but we didn't know it'd break in thirty days. So, if we could get those costs out and you look at where we can get the money from.
Julie?
So, I agree, Angelo. I think that we really need to look seriously ASAP at a generator, this is kind of ridiculous. But I'm just curious, does anyone else in the area have, use this same type of system, this inverter system?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so. It's a lot of, from what I understand, it's hospitals and data centers that generally have this. It's supposed to be a more reliable system providing emergency lighting. I know, I mean, our town engineer and the previous town administrator was involved in this, this is something, isn't something we went to on our own. But I also wanted to not forget to say, someone had mentioned earlier that maybe the inverter served everything but the elevator, it's just the lights, that's all that's on this now. I also wanted to mention, since the time, you know, this time of year, it's getting dark so much earlier, we can't be open on normal hours, so we're going to have to close. Instead of seven o'clock weeknights, it'll be six o'clock. And if it goes on, you know, longer, we'll start, it'll be five o'clock and then four o'clock. So, right now, our hours are Monday to Thursday, ten to six, and Friday and Saturday, ten to four. This Saturday, we're closed for the Cranberry Festival, so. That's it. We are doing our after, most of our programs have moved to the community center. I want to thank Carolyn and her staff for being so accommodating and it was great that they had room, so especially all of our daytime programs are moving over there for the preschoolers and different writers and book groups that we have. Our after-school program, we're meeting there also, where we will provide supervised care for middle schoolers after school. That's a real need, so we're going to do that from three to six on Monday to Thursday. Our concern, like Angelo, you mentioned the after-school, when you have middle schoolers and after-school care is expensive and when you get middle schoolers, you start thinking they could be home alone. This is our concern, is we want them there, you know, so that they're participating in programs that we have. They're not all academically oriented, but they're about getting kids involved and excited in learning and different things from, you know, science, whether it's Legos or drama, different things that get them excited and involved in the world around them, instead of going home and, you know, watching a video or being online. So, our concern is really, when you have a fifth, sixth, or seventh grader and you are thinking, gee, now the library's not available, should I just let them go home by themselves? Once you're getting, gotten over being uncomfortable about doing that, you get used to that and if we're open again in two weeks and we don't have a problem, we might not get those kids back. And that is the time when those kids are most at risk, is the unsupervised hours after school. And as a community, I think that's not what we want. We want the kids to come and so, you know, and it's great having our programs at the community center, but when the kids go there for story time, they're not picking up a pile of books to take home as well, so we're not tying it into with the library function that it's intended for.
Thank you, Ginny.
Thank you.
Chris, we don't meet again until next Monday. Sean's, I mean, we really can't do anything until we get what's actually wrong with it. Is there a way this board can make a decision or vote to let me sign an emergency action? Because as Ginny's pointed out and Angelo's pointed out, this affects more than the library, affects the community center, it affects the middle school, it affects, and it is, if not the most used building in the town, close to the most used. So, how do we-
Yeah, I'm not sure in terms of emergency action, I'm just not, I mean, if the board wanted to vote that if Sean gets a number that's within the margins of going to reserve fund, you could certainly, you know, authorize yourself to sign the reserve fund transfer request or, you know-
Is it practical that we might, that we'll have that by next Monday anyway?
I mean, until he meets with the person tomorrow, I mean, I don't know what he's going to hear. In order to do the town meeting, one of the things that we, I'll do tomorrow is I'll have Sandy put together the timeline to how to call a special town meeting and how quickly we can get that. So, if we do need more than the money we have available, then we could certainly, you know, at least the board needs to think about how we would do a special town meeting in short order.
So, Peter Hughes had asked the question via email. He believed that there was a ten thousand dollar maintenance contract on this. Have we looked at, there is not?
There's not.
And then, you had mentioned at the beginning, illegal, possibly using legal on this. I mean, I think that this board has expressed that this is extremely important and we don't want to cause any more of a delay for the library than we have to. So, I guess any and all means, or everything we have to throw at this, can we throw at?
Can we also ask, is it possible, in the meantime, while we try to get this information together, can we get Nsta ever-source out here to check the connection? Maybe there is something going on.
I was going to say, I think that's been done.
Oh, they did?
Well, they're supposed to have checked it.
Yeah, everything's wonderful.
Until last January, we went through at least two years of dimming, flickering lights and supposedly, they checked it. Whether there should be some money, you know, maybe we pay the twelve thousand, if that's what it is this time, to fix it, but could there be some other, you know, the town hires an engineer to look at what we have now, what is the best solution to change it, how much would it be? Because not a matter of, if we had another source of emergency lighting right now, all the, all the work in wiring, all those lighting circuits to go through, that has to be undone. It's not like you can just, you know, ignore it like it's not there. So, there's a cost to disconnecting from it and going to something else, too. So, maybe that's part of, you know, has to be factored in, too, but maybe we should be paying, doing a short-term, you know, what we hope is not a short-term fix, but doing something, then spending some money to have an electrical engineer really look at it and decide what makes more sense.
Thank you, Ginny. Chris on that? Who's that?
Yeah, I know Sean and I had a discussion, same conclusion, you know, I mean, he's limited, he's a facility maintenance guy, he's not an electrical engineer. So, you know, I'll certainly get ahold of him in the morning and say, you know, whatever it takes, let's figure this out and let's get some estimates to see how we move forward.
Last night, I drove by the library and the front lights were on.
See, and this makes me think that perhaps, you know, we're all badmouthing the manufacturer of the inverter, but the last time this happened, the same thing, the outside lights are not connected to the inverter and that system also, you know, some kind of, something fried with that and the lights are on, the exterior lights are on all the time, not using the timer. So, maybe some event happened unconnected with the, you know, the inverter didn't cause this. I mean, you still think it should be like robust enough to handle that kind of thing, but whatever. So, I don't know, so the outside lights are on, the exterior on the building and the parking lot lights twenty-four seven.
Okay. Angela?
Michael, I think the situation might count as an emergency, which means that we can call a meeting of the selectmen on a shorter, shorter notice, I believe. You don't have to wait for, to post it for forty-eight hours if there's an emergency.
Yeah, I mean, once we get something, an action for the board to take, we could certainly-
What I was saying is, if something comes up that needs a decision, you can call, call a meeting of this group, you know, in a couple hours, if you can find us all.
Okay. Julie?
Is it the same subcontractor that keeps coming out and what's his relationship to the company that-
Company's in California and they have, you know, subcontractors where I think it's been the same for a couple of years. I don't know if it's always been the same. I think they cover, you know, say, New England and they do a bunch of customers in a certain area for them. So, these subcontractors aren't, they're basically acting in their capacity of the-
Right, they're not really affiliated beyond just that connection to the company.
Yeah, I mean, it's a proprietary product, so they have to have an authorized technician deal with it.
Yeah, right. One thing I just wanted to say about having an electrical engineer, if we spend twenty-five thousand dollars or whatever it would be, to have someone look at it, is that we have had town council look at the contract for the inverter before and there was nothing we could do, there was some unrelated deficiencies with it. However, we could use that, if we had that technical expertise to look at it, maybe there is a problem with the way the system was designed for the, where it's installed, but no one in town has that expertise to look at that and say that and that's what we could, we could use that, you know, maybe in the end, we can, you know, file a claim against the manufacturer, whoever designed it.
Thank you, Ginny. Janelle, anything on this?
No.
Chris, anything else?
No, I certainly share the frustration.
Yes.
I do have a couple of other items under the town administrator report.
Okay, just real quick on this, this was put on here by my request and it's not on the agenda because it wasn't reasonably anticipated that we would talk about this. It happened Friday afternoon, there was no time to get it on the agenda. That's why there's discussion on it tonight. Chris, go ahead.
On the, just a couple of other items that I had, I did put in the kind of information for the board, I did come across a, there was a selectman's policy on a town administrator performance evaluation document, that I wasn't familiar with that previously, so I just put that in there for the board's information. Also, Mr. Chairman, you had asked at the last meeting about the financial report and the use material, so I did put in there what we had in our files on the Albor House. Again, not for discussion tonight, but just to let you know that we put that in.
Thank you.
On the, I just wanted to bring up, next week, I think we have perks is scheduled to come in and I know this is probably the first time that we've done a hearing in a while. What I was going to suggest is that Coleman and Page has a process, if you will, for how to conduct a hearing, so I'll make sure that we get that to you, Mr. Chairman and other board members. You know, just, it's pretty rudimentary, but people have to be sworn in, people have to, you know, prosecution gets an opportunity to speak, the defense gets an opportunity to speak, and they have a little process just to ensure equity and fairness in the deliberations. In terms of Glenn Corbo, the attorney at Coleman and Page, that's been given the material, so he most likely would ask as the prosecutor, act as the prosecutor, will have, the police officers will be the witnesses and then whoever the perks people want to bring in, they'll do it. And then, after close of the hearing, then the board will have to decide what you think based upon the preponderance of the evidence, what the outcome should be. And I'll ask Mr. Corbo, too, or Attorney Corbo, to give a range. You know, it could be anything from a verbal warning to a suspension of the entertainment license. There is a whole, a whole list that's available based upon what you guys see in the materials.
We can go over this Wednesday morning?
Yeah, yeah, you know, I should have it by Wednesday morning.
And just so the public's aware, this was a entertainment license violation, a noise complaint, or several noise complaints, this is, and that was the extent of it.
Yeah, and the material was previously given to the board, so it is public material that's out there for what the violations are, alleged violations are.
Just, it's a very serious process you just outlined, I want to make sure the public knows that there was not a lot going on down there.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I know, it made it sound a lot worse than it may be. Then the other one is, I think we have the public meeting next week on the intersection of Pleasant Bay and Route Thirty-Nine, so we'll have that material as well. We did get a confirmation from-
Steven Tupper.
Steve Tupper.
We'll be in to talk about the overall and then Mr. Hooper and I, I think Mr. Hooper's already put together a recommendation, so the board will have that. You know, in my mind, it's a, just a public meeting, it's not a public hearing, there's no real formal action that's necessary, but at least get a sense for the board in terms of what direction the board would like to head in. I think, as I've alluded to in previous comments, that I think we should do everything to improve visibility and do kind of essential elements that we're able to do in the short term, do an assessment phase and then if something more significant is needed, then go back. And I do want to just, in my conversation with Mr. Hooper, that intersection, there's different criteria for how dangerous it is and, you know, one of them is obviously when people get, when there's fatalities, this is not that case. This intersection, though, does have a, I think, I think, if I remember what Mr. Hooper told me, the highest frequency of vehicle crashes or vehicle damage on Cape Cod. So, it is something that has a significance to it. I did re-look at the numbers, I did make a mistake in the, in my observations one night when I was here, so I realized I should fix that. I said that there was sixteen accidents in the second year of the study and fifteen in the first year. I had that wrong, it was actually thirty-one accidents. Sixteen had required ambulance rides and fifteen of them were vehicle-related. In terms of the numbers on the actual accidents, thirteen was a high year, fourteen was a little bit lower, fifteen went up. And the only significance of that, we put up the, I call them the Christmas tree lights around the, around the stop sign. I don't believe that that had a positive effect, at least based upon the years worth of data on that. The line striping has had, we've only had three accidents, unfortunately, I think all three had ambulance-related activities, but the numbers are definitely down for this year. So, the island painting that we did has had some potential effect, although that's not based upon a full year yet, so just FYI.
Chris, once this is, you present, you make your recommendations, is a public hearing required after that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And that concludes my comments, excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. On to selectmen's report, Janelle?
I don't have anything.
I said enough tonight.
You said enough, okay. I, Julie, do you have-
No, I don't have any.
I don't have anything either. Will you just read that vacancy list? It's in the packet.
Oh, yeah, oh, sorry, hold on, sit down.
We've added reading what's open for committee vacancies so that people at home watching, something might catch them.
So, let me see, I'll just read the committee and the number of vacancies?
Yes, please.
Agricultural Commission has one, the Appeals Board for an Alternate, one, Architectural Advisory Committee, one, Bike Ways, one, Border Health, one, Brooks Academy Museum, one, Building Code Board of Appeals, five, Community Preservation Committee Housing Rep, one, Conservation Commission, one full and two alternate, and, sorry, there's three vacancies. One full and two alternates are needed. Council on Aging, two, Cultural Council, three, Disability Rights Committee, five, Forest Committee, one, Historic District Historical Commission Alternates needed, two, Housing Committee, one, Real Estate and Open Space, one, Sacro Tucket Development Committee, one, Traffic Safety Committee, two, Trails Committee, three, Treasure Chest Committee, they need one full and one alternate, so a total of two. Utility and Energy Conservation, one, Waterways Committee, an alternate, they need one.
Great, thank you, Julie. If you're interested in any of those, go to the town administrator's office and Sandy will give you a citizens' activity form. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Sure, move.
We are adjourned.